Welcome to everyone today and thank you for attending this meeting of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee. Today's meeting is open to the public and it's great to see lots of members of the public here today on the webcast and recorded and that recording will be available for people to watch later on the council's website. It will also be possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and potentially rebroadcast this meeting. We've received four petitions and seven questions from members of the public and we intend to go through those one by one. The agenda and reports for today's meeting are available on the council's website and a small number of paper copies are available, but I hope there's not too many paper copies seen as it is literally that big and spans, what is it, 1,526 pages, so light reading perhaps. But thank you very much for people coming today. Please can I request that the mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test planned today, but the town hall does like to spring surprises on us every now and again. If there is an emergency evacuation, please do take instruction from the town hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square where hopefully it isn't too wet. Please could I ask each committee member in turn to introduce themselves and I think I'll start with our Lib Dem colleagues and Andrew on that side of the room.
councillor Andrew Sanger, Member for Forward Ward and Lib Dem Group spokesperson.
councillor Ian Auckland, councillor for Graves Park Ward.
councillor Richard Shaw, councillor for Bechford Green Hill Ward.
councillor Ruth Mursrow for City Ward. Hello, I'm Christine Gilligan-Cobo and I'm a councillor in Hillsborough Ward and I'm also deputy chair of this committee.
Hello, my name's Craig Campbell-Pew, I'm councillor for East Ecclesfield Ward.
Good afternoon, David Barker, councillor for Richmond Ward.
Thank you very much councillor Barker. So that moves us on to item one which is apologies for absence. Have we received any apologies from absence today? No, thank you very much. I believe that Safia is running slightly late and Bill will be joining us shortly. That takes us to item two which is a normal item on our standard agendas which is about the exclusion of the public and press and there are no items that have identified today which would require that. Item three is declarations of interest. This is an opportunity for members to declare an interest in any of the items of business on the agenda today. Of course, as we normally would do, please refer to the item of business and state whether it's a pecuniary or a personal interest and outline the reason for the declaration. Can't see anyone who is declaring an interest, so thanks very much. Item four are minutes of our previous meeting and I am going to ask the members of the meeting to approve those as a correct record, the minutes of the meeting of our committee, the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee, which were held when the weather was much nicer and we were very warm in this room on the 19th of July. In your very extensive agenda pack, they are on pages 11 to 31. Now can I ask that they be approved as a correct record? Are we all agreed? Brilliant, thank you. So those minutes are agreed. That therefore moves us on to item five which is perhaps the most important part of our meeting which is public questions and petitions. As we mentioned before, we've received four petitions and seven public questions for today's meeting. It's important to note that there's a maximum of 30 minutes for this item, but I think we should comfortably be able to get through them. Each person will have two minutes to pose their question. If you have got a petition, you'll of course have three minutes to introduce that. In order to be fair to everyone, so in order to be fair to everyone, I'd like you to try your very best to minimise any preamble and highlight any key points that you might well have. And I'll invite you one by one to come up to the front table here and if you could, when you come over, make sure that you press the microphone so that we can hear you and pick up your voice as well. Our first petition is from Joseph Dawes who unfortunately is not here today, but we will note his petition and we'll make sure that he gets a written response to that petition. Our second petition is or has been organised by Philip Ward. Philip, I think you are in the room today, aren't you? Thank you. If you come near the microphone on the front desk, that would be brilliant.
Adrian Hallam who's is going to speak for a minute or so before I speak, if that's okay.
Thank you so much. So it's Adrian Hallam, you said. Thank you, Mr Hallam.
Yes.
And Philip Ward, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. In addition to the online petition, which of course not everyone can access, we have 57 additional names predominantly gathered from the Grange Crescent Nursing Home which is adjacent to the Parcement Cemetery Road where we believe there should be a crossing. Personally, I've been involved with the cemetery for over 30 years and recently was the site architect for the 3.8 million pounds restoration. I think you should judge this thing not on the past but on the future. The council has had 3.8 million pounds spent on a very important site nationally, regionally and indeed for everyone who lives around it. And it would be foolish to spend that amount of money to make a park accessible and accessibility was one of the main features of the project, to then make it inaccessible or leave it inaccessible by not making it accessible in terms of its periphery.
Councillor Miskell has kindly told me what the likely response from the transport people to this petition is. So what I'm going to address I think is issues, perhaps a slightly wider issue. I understand that the criteria that the council uses for installation of pedestrian crossings are accident rates and cost and that's sort of understandable that they have to apply some kind of constraints and then they have to look at places where pedestrian crossings are most needed. But I think there's another criterion about need that should be considered which is access to amenities because it's perfectly possible that there is an amenity exists which is not easily accessible, right? And that therefore people choose not to access it and therefore the accident rates are actually lower than they would be if they had chosen to try to access it. Yeah, so I think this is a slightly strange criterion. I want to add another thing which is that there are moves afoot and I think the council should put its voice behind this to making pedestrian crossings cheaper and more easily installed, which is to do away with the requirement that they have bellicia beacons. And I understand from various articles that it can cut the cost from, well, an article in The Guardian says it cuts the cost from £30,000 to £1,000 to actually not have bellicia beacons there. And it's been shown, research has been done, it was commissioned by Manchester Council, that shows that these actually work, just lines in the roads and they're very common in Europe. So I'd like to thank councillor Miskell for actually mentioning the fact that they are common in Europe. I have nothing more to say, but I would urge the council to consider putting its voice behind these, just painting lines in the roads in order to have pedestrian crossings. Thank you.
And thank you very much Adrian and Philip for your question and thank you very much as well Philip for speaking to me early today about this issue. And I think you do quite rightly highlight that whilst we in the city have to make sure the decisions that we take on installing crossings are driven by the data and we know that there has been one serious injury, road collision in the last six years in the vicinity of this location, we also needs to be mindful that in order to roll out more zebra crossings around our city, we need a more coordinated approach nationally. And that means following lessons learnt in other countries. We know, don't we, in France for example, in our conversation I was highlighting how they have a different approach and on many streets around France and particularly in residential areas, they'll have painted lines on roads. They are easy and quick to install, there is no reason that we shouldn't do that in order to prioritise safety for the most vulnerable road users as well. So thank you very much for bringing your petition today. I do agree with you and will continue to work with you on that, adding the wider support for action from central government as well. And we'll also look to see what we can do about ensuring that the suggestion that you've made about a crossing near the Sheffield Central Cemetery is on our list of works. Obviously that would have to be prioritised in line with the criteria that we've got across the city. Thank you. That therefore takes us to our next petition which is from Mr Graham Rowe. Mr Rowe, I think you're here. If you could come to the microphone. Thank you, Mr Rowe.
Good afternoon, everybody. I am presenting a petition that's been collected by Manor Castle Green Party to make the Talbot Roads, Talbot Streets, Bernard Street and Duke Street crossing safe and it's been signed by 228 people. The traffic lights at Duke Streets and Bernard Street urgently need pedestrian signals. The junction is in close proximity to two health centres, two pharmacies, a well-used Salvation Army centre, sheltered housing at Grafton Court, Grace Owen Nursery and Parkhill Flats. And there's also a popular meeting place which I gather is frequented by many elderly people known as the Trades and Labour Club. The junction is a massive obstacle on an important walking route to the city centre from the city road area. Crash Map details 14 accidents that have occurred between 2011 and 2021, so that's averaging more than one every year. Fortunately, only one of these was serious, but it's only a matter of time before someone is killed at this junction. This has been a problem for many years. During rush hour, there is no safe time to cross the road as there is always a stream of traffic coming from one direction or the other. And the configuration of the roads make it very difficult for pedestrians, cyclists and drivers to view the traffic from every direction. We need to encourage more active travel in the city, enabling people to walk and cycle more. But this junction is so dangerous, it puts people off walking, especially if they're not able to move quickly. So I'd really like to emphasise the point that last speaker's made, the accident statistics are lower here because people don't cross at this junction, they avoid it like the plague. And if we are going to encourage people to walk, we need to make this junction safe. An unfortunate effect of the clean air zone is that more lorries and vans are now using this route because they come off the final exit from the parkway before the charging zone and they drive along Cricket Inn Road, Bernard Streets and Talbot Streets to avoid paying the charge. It's endangered commuters walking or going by bike into town in the morning and out again at night. Families and young people and children travel to and from the school each day. Car drivers are also at risk at this difficult and dangerous junction as they assume if the lights are green, it will be safe to proceed, but they may well be faced with a pedestrian halfway across the road as they come round the bend. Nobody wants to be responsible for the death of a pedestrian, so drivers would also find appropriate road safety measures to their advantage. I hope councillors, you've seen the video I made of this junction, you should nod your head if you have. Lots of people have been horrified looking at that video. It was taken, it's, there's five minutes worth of footage on it, it was taken still over 15 minutes. So I haven't overemphasised the problems, it's just how that junction is at every rush hour. Traffic regularly mounts the pavement when approaching the junction from Bernard Street because there's one and a half lanes there basically and people that want to filter left actually mount the curb to go left. And then traffic going from Bernard Street to Talbot Street often accelerate round the corner to make sure it can get through the lights before they change, but due to the bend in the road, if pedestrians are crossing on Talbot Streets, they don't see them until they've gone past the traffic lights. This is the second time the petition has been collected to appeal for pedestrian lights at this junction, the previous one being in 2014. Since then, traffic has got much worse. The reason there aren't more accidents, as I said before, is simply that pedestrians avoid the area because it's too dangerous. In 2023, it really should not be difficult to cross a road. Please Sheffield City Council at now to save lives at this extremely dangerous junction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Rowe, for your petition requesting that pedestrian crossing facilities at Talbot Road, Duke Street and Bernard Road Junction which Labour councillors will know very well as it's right next to the Trades and Labour Club which is the heart of the community in Manor Castle. It's also an issue that Manor Castle councillors have been raising and working with us to find a solution on and I can see that councillor Seanne Richards is here watching proceedings as she is busy working to improve road safety in her ward. It's also an issue that Paul Blomfield MP and his office have been highlighting and it's an issue that demonstrates, doesn't it, how valuable it is to have good local councillors working alongside an MP and the committee chair to push for change in the city. As with the previous petitioner, it's important to say that we do receive many requests for road safety and highways improvements to assist pedestrians crossing roads throughout the year. As much as we would like to be able to action most of them, limitations on resources mean that we must assess score and prioritise locations to measure according to certain criteria and are currently only able to progress a small number of those each year. As you will know, our road safety budgets in this council and in councils across England have been decimated by the government since 2010 which does impact our ability to implement a variety of road safety measures. The sites for the 2023 and 24 Pedestrian Improvement Programme have been finalised and are already in progress. However, it's important to say that when nearing the end of each calendar year, the prioritisation and selection process is initiated for the rolling annual pedestrian improvement programme that's due to commence for the following financial year and the top scoring sites are reassessed to determine whether they have remained at the same score, increased or reduced. I think it's also important to make the wider point here about the need for action from central government to allow us to bring forward a mass rollout of zebra crossings around the city in a much more cost-effective and efficient manner. Around the city, we know that crossings cost upwards of £80,000 to put in place because we have to install those flashing beacons at the same time. When you visit France or other European countries, you'll notice that they do take a different approach and I hope that you and your colleagues in the Green Party are able to support my calls for action from government on this. Well, thank you very much, Mr Rowe, for your question and petition. Our next petitioner is Mr David Cronshaw. Unfortunately, he is not here today, but we'll make sure that he does get a full written response to his petition. That therefore moves us on to public questions. We've received seven questions from members of the public. Our first one from Mark Lallamond, apologies, my pronunciation is rubbish, is unfortunately Mr Lallamond is not here today, but we'll make sure that he has a full written response. However, the second question is from someone that the committee will know very well because he's excellent work informing us of various issues, is Mr Richard Brogan. Are you here, Richard?
Thank you, Mr Brogan. Thank you for having me again today. Good afternoon to you all and may I thank you for allowing me to speak again at the committee meeting today. My name is Richard Brogan and I am principal dentist of LWT Dental Care on Exal Road. We have previously expressed serious concerns relating to proposed traffic management changes along Exal Road that could potentially impact on our patients' access to our services. Specific concerns relate to the prospect of extending bus lane hours and the possibility of introducing red lines across both Exal Road and Abidale Road. I'm here today to address the fact that there is still a possibility of extending the hours of the South West Bus Corridor in the future. I appreciate that the committee has already listened to the concerns of retailers and service providers by proceeding with implementing non-controversial measures first next spring, but for me, this is not far enough. This is still a very concerning situation for a service provider who is duty-bound to provide access to all. We conducted a survey to better understand our patients' travel behaviours when attending appointments with us. The purposes of this survey was to find out how our patients would be affected in the event that any bus lane extensions were made in the future, as well as their thoughts and feelings surrounding the extension of bus lane and red lines. Our survey was run from the 16th of June 2023 up until the 13th of September 2023. Briefly, our survey showed the following results: almost 79% of our patients asked travelled to their appointments by car with 16% of respondents walking in. Only 1.3% of patients used public transport. 60% of patients were able to park directly outside of the practice within the current waiting hours. 56% of respondents believed that the public transport network is inadequate. In spite of major infrastructure investment, 67% of respondents still would not use the public transport network. 91% of respondents expressed no support to extending bus lane hours. 97% of those asked did not agree that extending bus lanes was a good idea and a staggering 95% of respondents believe it would have an adverse effect on accessibility for our patients. Clearly, the overriding feeling is that current restrictions are adequate and as demonstrated in the connecting Sheffield executive report, there is still no support for any extension to the bus corridor operational hours. Across both Exal Road and Abidale Road, there are a variety of healthcare providers. We estimate there to be some 13 physiotherapy, osteopathy and chiropractic clinics, but also eight dental practices in total. Across all of those dental practices, there are an estimated 55,000 patients, all of whom access our services. The opposition is compelling and it is disconcerting that this measure may still come in in the future. What constitutes as a success for the measures that have already been agreed needs clarifying specifically and quantitatively by this committee. I therefore would implore that members of this committee make a sensible decision and commit to listening to what the public and professionals want and ensure that any traffic management measure in the future does not include extending bus lane operational hours across both Exal Road and Abidale Road in the future. Access to dental services is already at an all-time low. Patients really shouldn't have to deal with another challenge like this. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Richard, for your question and the time that you've given up to run us through your concerns and also for allowing me to visit your dental surgery and sit there next to your chair as well whilst you were telling me about how some of the changes may well impact your surgery. I think it's probably important to say that businesses establishment like yours are of course crucial to the success of Ecclesall Road and the time that you put into supplying the committee with data related to your dental surgery is really to be commended. As agreed at the committee on the 19th of July of this year, it's proposed to implement the following bus prioritisation measures. Those are junction improvements and traffic management amendment at or near the junctions along London Road, Abidale Road and Ecclesall Road bus corridors, camera enforcement of existing sections of bus lanes on London Road, Abidale Road and Ecclesall Road. The detailed design of these measures will be finalised and proposed amendments to localise traffic regulation orders known as TROs. Those will be statutory consultations will take place and with regards to any associated changes that may well be needed. When such matters are then brought before us, they'll be subject to further discussions by this committee and recommendations will be presented for further consideration in due course. It is important to say that any implementation of these works will then be reviewed. This will be undertaken to determine if further bus priority measures are required, which I hope will not be needed as we're working to make these methods work. As with all areas around the city, local authorities do have a toolkit of options available to them including mending bus lane hours of operation and enhanced enforcement of parking and waiting restrictions and of course they should always be under consideration throughout our city. As you know, we need to improve bus journey times and make them much more consistent and reliable along those important corridors of London Road, Abidale Road and Ecclesall Road. Data on journey time, consistency and reliability will be provided by our colleagues at South Yorkshire Mail Combined Authority and all of a Copards Office and bus operators. And I've met with First Bus this week who have assured me that they're able to provide additional data to help inform our decision-making. In your specific question about the measurement of success, which I think is an important one for you to make, the benefits of the scheme will be reconfirmed at final business case stage later this year. At that stage, we'll publish the criteria for measuring success and I have asked officers to ensure that you and other stakeholders in the community are kept informed of this. That's something that I heard loud and clear when I came out to talk to businesses and residents a number of months ago. Your question also referenced any potential impact on parking. You'll know that the main factors determining parking on both corridors is bus lane operational hours. As agreed by this committee on the 19th of July, the current approach is to enforce parking in bus lanes without amendments to bus lane hours of operation. The bus lane hours of operation are 7.30 till 9.30 in the morning and 4 till 6.30 for the majority of bus lanes and I hope this will give you some assurance. As mentioned previously, should the review of traffic management changes we have agreed to deliver indicate that further changes are required, that would always be subject to further consultation and engagement and I have made assurance to you and other businesses that actually we would get round the table if we needed to explore other options if there were needed. Finally, I think it's probably important to say that any economic impact assessment potentially undertaken would need to be impartial and I heard that from businesses that I visited on the road and from yourself as well. The factors determining any investigations such as the range of stakeholders to be involved would need to be confirmed following an agreement on the requirements for that economic impact assessment. If it's needed at all, I would want to get around that table with businesses and residents to ensure that you're happy with whatever approach that is taken as much as possible. And I do hope that this answer goes some way to clarify matters and of course, I'm more than happy to continue to meet with you and others over the coming months and years. And our approach to this issue and to change should always be one of dialogue. So thank you very much for bringing your question today. That therefore moves us on to a question by Dylan Lewis Cressa, I believe. Dylan, I think you're in the room, aren't you?
So just for context, my name is Dylan Lewis Cressa. I'm a student at the University of Sheffield studying for a master's degree in urban studies and planning and I happen to live in Crooks and that is what my question is about today on item 11 of the Crooks and Walkley Active Travel Neighbourhood. So Sheffield is supposedly the outdoor city encouraging people of all ages to get out and enjoy the outdoors and to make use of the active travel infrastructure that we have and we need to develop in the future. If the Crooks and Walkley Active Travel Neighbourhood is modified in a way that encourages car-centric development further, contributing to over a century of poor planning policy, how does the council seek to ensure that residents and visitors are directed towards the most sustainable forms of transport in the city? That means decreasing carbon emissions, increasing deliverability... That means decreasing carbon emissions, increasing deliverability of residents through lower noise pollution, through lower air pollution, and reclaiming space for community engagement from motor vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan, for your question, and best of luck, of course, with your studies and, of course, your involvement in local democracy, and it is always good to hear. The council has a comprehensive website to assist residents and visitors to use sustainable transport options, and you can find that on the website in the travel and transport section, which sets out information relating to public transport, cycling, walking, and also includes information about cycle rides, groups and coaching, cycle parking and facilities, passers and public transport providers, and public rights of way as well. Of course, there's always space for us to improve, and we will be continuing to improve our offer on the website, and also to work with the Mail Combined Authority and Oliver Copehart, South Yorkshire's mayor, who I know is very supportive of making sure that people are given proper advice and can access good choices about how they move across South Yorkshire and Sheffield as well. You may also be interested in our website relating to our response to the climate emergency, including the transport decarbonisation roadmap, which was approved by this committee in July as well. So thank you very much for your question. Our next question is from Ben Compi, who is unfortunately not attending today, I don't believe, and therefore he will be given a full written answer to his question. Our question after that is from Zach Vinnie, I believe. Zach, are you in the room? Thank you, Zach.
Hello. Thank you to the members for hearing my question today. What I'm asking about is reference to do with the decision on the Walkley and Crooks ATM and also the Sheaf Valley cycle route, which is going to be made later in the session. I've got two questions because I'm cheeky, so let's go right now. So Sheffield City Council has supposedly declared a climate emergency, of which we know in the UK, our largest emitting sector is transport, which actually accounts for a quarter of the UK's total emissions. The majority of these emissions come from motor transport, and this is not set to get any better. Motor traffic is still projected to grow by 54% by 2060, and actually, transport is something, as a local authority with devolved powers, it's something that Sheffield City Council really could do something about this. My first question is, how does the council expect to work towards its decarbonisation goals without active investment and implementation of sustainable transport alternatives encouraged by these schemes such as the Walkley and Crooks ATM and the Sheaf Valley cycle route? Second question, which is Sheffield City Council bought in a clean air zone in February 2023. Whilst this measure is progressive in addressing toxic air in the city, I live close to Lowfield Primary School, which has toxic air in all three levels of micro particulates, particulates and nitrogen oxide, and we know that toxic air in Sheffield alone accounts for hundreds of premature deaths annually. So, question, how does the council expect to encourage modal shift required to clean our air without active investment in schemes such as the Walkley and Crooks ATM and the Sheaf Valley cycle route? Thank you for hearing my questions, members.
Thank you very much, Zach, for your question, of course, for the work that you do for Cycling UK, advocating for sustainable transport choices in this city and beyond. Some of the issues that you raised in your question are, of course, on today's agenda, and I hope that you'll be able to stay to watch the debate. However, if that's not possible, you can also watch it back on our webcast at your convenience. I'll try to be a bit systematic in addressing the questions that you've raised. With regards to question one, our analysis shows that transport accounts for 26% of Sheffield's carbon emissions, the third highest sector after industry and housing. You can find out more about Sheffield's transport and other emissions in the Pathways to Zero Carbon in Sheffield Report, that was published in 2020, which can be accessed online on our website. We recently set out how we intend to address and reduce these emissions in the way that we travel, decarbonisation roadmap chapter, which was approved by this committee on the 19th of July of this year. And the document sets out the challenge, the vision for change, and some of the activity that we are undertaking between now and 2025 to accelerate the transition to net zero travel, including activity around increased active travel, improving public transport, consolidating freight and decarbonising vehicles. And the roadmap document is also on the council's website. I think it's also important to say, isn't it, and make the wider point, that we do need action from central government, and we need a central government that is interested in decarbonisation and supporting local authorities in order to go about achieving that, and people should be mindful about that at the ballot box. With regards to question two, encouraging and enabling the uptake of walking and cycling are important parts of our overall ambition for improving the air that we breathe, which would address the congestion on our streets and reduce carbon emissions from transport. To achieve this and to ensure that people in Sheffield see walking and cycling as a realistic choice, our infrastructure for active travel needs to improve. We will soon be developing a Sheffield Active Travel Plan that sets out the cycling and walking networks that Sheffield needs to deliver to support sustainable growth at both a strategic corridor level but also local community level, and this will form the basis of a programme of future infrastructure that we will proactively seek to deliver, using suitable funding opportunities, including but of course not limited to the Department for Transport, Active Travel England and South Yorkshire Mail Combined Authority as well. I think it's probably important to say that cuts to Active Travel England have, of course, made life much more difficult for authorities and I think are regrettable as well, and no doubt something that you and your organisation are campaigning on as well. So thank you very much for your question, and we look forward to working with you in the future as well. Our next question is from Joyce Green, who unfortunately is not attending today or not able to attend. We'll make sure that she gets a full written answer. After that, and I think our final question for today is from Marion Gerson. Marion, I think you're in the room. It's lovely to see you.
Thank you, and good afternoon. Can I just say, I may look like a little old lady with white hair. I am a little old lady with white hair, but I have the training and the education to understand data and to be able to interpret it. And so I'm going to give you some numbers today. First, thank you, Chair, for getting the most recent figures for air quality monitoring made available. That was very valuable. As expected, these show that the nitrogen dioxide measurements for the Abidale Road pinch point have increased substantially. Opposite Nether Edge School, it went from 33 in 2021 up to 41 in 2022. That's a 24% increase. At the Cardinal Junction, it went from 32 to 39, a 22% increase. And these increased measurements were the result of just half a year of Archer Lane and Little London Road being closed, with the congestion that that caused. So we can reasonably assume that a whole year's worth of pollution measurement would have been even worse, perhaps as much as 30 to 40% higher. The report from officers on the closure of Archer Lane states as a benefit that it's resulted in a 3% drop in vehicle movements within the Nether Edge Active Travel Neighbourhood. As I discussed in my detailed analysis of the data, this drop in through traffic is largely the result of nearly 2,000 fewer vehicles a day accessing the Abidale Road pinch point to and from the outer suburbs, Millhouses, Dor, Totley and so on. Some of those drivers may have decided not to go into town, some may have decided to cycle or go by bus, but many of them are likely to have chosen alternative routes, such as Ecclesall Road, Chesterfield Road and so on. So the city and the planet probably won't have benefited as much as it suggests. On the other hand, a large majority of respondents to the survey questionnaire cited increased travel times, extended queuing and greater fuel use for their concerns over the closure of Archer Lane. One outcome of this is what the pollution figures on Abidale Road are measuring. If half of vehicle movements in the affected area had an average of increase of, say, 40%, which incidentally is an underestimate, given what I've been told, that would mean 20% more cars driving or sitting with their engines running. That 20% would greatly outweigh a 3% drop in the number of vehicles in the area. Where, then, is the benefit of the Nether Edge Active Travel Neighbourhood to our efforts to reduce pollution and carbon dioxide emissions in Sheffield? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs Gerson, for your question. This is an issue your local councillors, Nagat, Basra and Ibi Ula have been highlighting, and I know that they've been working extremely hard to speak to local people and find solutions on this issue. As you know, this is a matter that will be discussed and we'll be making a decision on later in the meeting, and I hope you'll be able to stay and watch the debate, but of course you can watch it again on our webcast that will be recorded. It's important to say that much of the information that I'm going to provide is very technical, and therefore I've taken the advice from officers. As highlighted in the report to the Policy Committee for the Sheaf Valley Sackavue and the Nether Edge Travel Neighbourhood, it is not possible to make any conclusions either from the scheme's impact on air quality along Abidale Road or elsewhere. I should say that this is because the air quality measurements that the council take using simple diffusion tubes are only reliable enough to provide long-term trends in terms of changes in nitrogen dioxide concentrations over at least two to three years. Given that both schemes were introduced nearly halfway through 2022 and include a period of Covid lockdown restrictions, there's no way of showing the impact the scheme may have had based upon the 2022 data, and for these reasons, we must treat data with a level of caution and make any conclusions equally cautiously. As traffic volumes continue to rise following the easing of traffic restrictions in 2021, so too we would expect nitrogen dioxide concentrations to rise. Indeed, citywide, there being an average increase in nitrogen dioxide concentrations of nearly 16% across all diffusion tubes between 2021 and 22. Some areas of the city not connected to either of these schemes have seen average increases of nitrogen dioxide concentrations as high as 28% between 2021 and 22. Traffic congestion along Abidale Road and Ecclesall Road is, of course, not new, but continues to ride towards pre-pandemic levels, as is the case on a citywide basis. Traffic count data indicates that vehicle movement across junctions have changed as a result of the scheme. This resulted in some increase in vehicle counts on certain roads and at certain times of the day, including Abidale Road, Boardfield Road, Sheldon Road equally. However, data also shows decreases in traffic count data at other arms of this junction and at other locations along Abidale Road. Given that transport is a significant contributor to poor air quality in towns and cities and accounts for around 26% of carbon emissions in Sheffield, it's vital that we do take steps to reduce the overall emissions in our city from vehicles over the long term and provide real opportunities and choices for people to make journeys by active and sustainable means where possible. Decisions on this and other active travel interventions will be taken today, and I hope you'll be able to stay and listen to the debate. I thank you for your question, as well as your emails to both myself and committee members as well, and also for the diligence that you paid in following this debate over the past few weeks, months and perhaps even years. Thank you. That therefore concludes questions from the public, including petitions, which is item five. Item six is a new part of our committee, in line with constitutional changes that have been recently made. It's item six, which is members' questions. There is a maximum time of 10 minutes for the whole item of business, and councillor Richard Shaw has been our only member who has submitted questions. Perhaps other people could do next time as well, or perhaps I will regret asking, encouraging you to do so. Written questions from myself, as the Chair of the Committee, to questions submitted by members in advance of the meeting have been emailed to all members and circulated at this meeting. This item of business is to provide an opportunity for members who have submitted questions, i.e. Richard, to ask one supplementary question, and he has to be very kind for each question. And the definition of a supplementary question for members was defined in June 2018 council meeting, apparently. Richard, you have an opportunity to ask any supplementary questions if you want. You have submitted many questions, and you have also received responses to those as well.
Thank you, Chair. I shouldn't take the full 10 minutes, but I'll try. So question one on page one. Thank you very much for your response regarding my question about collision data at the top of Green Hill Avenue and Green Hill Main Road, which is a big concern for local residents in my ward. So you said that since February 2022, there's been no collisions recorded at this location. One of the people living next to the junction has been very diligent in recording basically all the collisions that happened there on a regular basis since 2018, and recording how many vehicles involved, whether or not the police have attended and so forth. So since mid-2019, more than 60 collisions have happened at this location. I have faced it in council quite a few times, and the police attend on the majority of those occasions. So for the council not to have any data is concerning. So would you be good enough to take it up with the officers and with the police to see what could be done to kind of improve the, let's say, the reliability of the data being passed along? Because 60 versus not, well, nothing is very concerning.
Thank you very much, councillor Shaw. It's important to state, isn't it, that Stats 19 is the protocol which outlines information that's to be collected whenever an injury crash, and that means a collision where there is a physical injury, is reported to the police. Collisions which are reported to the police, which are the resultant injury of that, are then compiled by the Department for Transport. The information recorded by each crash under Stats 19 contains three distinct elements: the attendant circumstance of that crash, a separate record for each vehicles involved in the crash, and a separate record of each casualty resulting from the crash as well. So I think it's quite clear that there is a clear process about how the police share that information. It is recorded by police officers to ensure that there is as much uniformity in the collection of collision data as possible, and that therefore means that Stats 19 is viewed as a robust dataset. I hope that helps answer your question. Of course, I'm more than happy to work with you on this issue or any other issue as well, and get more clarification that you might well require about Stats 19 and the protocol for collecting data between the Department of Transport, ourselves and the police.
Thank you very much. I may well take you up on that. Question three on page two regarding measures on Asline Road and whether any measures would be put in place to deter pavement parking either on cycleway or on the pavement. Yes, I'd be delighted to meet with you, either on-site or virtually. My understanding is that when these measures were being designed... My, my understanding is that when this, these measures were being designed or, or put in, the original intention was to put in double height curbs to prevent vehicles mounting footway and then alternatively having wands put in the road to obstruct vehicles going in. So it's a little bit of a concern that basically nothing, out of those two, two options has been chosen. So I'd be, yeah, have keen to discuss with you what, what is going to be done. As a, as a, my actual supplementary question is that the nearby new crossing on Sneaky Road and Worsley Road, which is kind of related to the scheme, the, that is causing issues at the moment with the, with the timings, apparently causing, causing tailbacks. It's not being quite timed right. So would you be, be good enough to, to look into the timings of, of those lights and ensure that the, that the lights have been properly installed? Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Shaw. The questions that you asked relate to an item that is for subject to discussion further on in our agenda today and in line with the normal constitutional requirements about member questions. We wouldn't normally accept them because they are subject to that discussion later today. However, I was minded because this is our first opportunity for members to ask questions to ensure that you did have a written answer and it is there for you. Because it's an item to be discussed later on in the agenda, I won't go into depth about it. You do raise an important point about traffic lights, which has been made by local councillors, Ibby Ullah and Nagat Basharat, and I continue to work with them in order to find a solution on the particular issue that you raise.
No further questions.
Thank you very much, councillor Shaw. That therefore takes us to item seven, which is the Work Programme. The committee's Work Programme is attached at Appendix One for the committee's consideration and discussion. The aim of this Work Programme is to show all known substantive agenda items for forthcoming meetings of the committee to enable this committee and other committees, officers, partners and citizens of this city to plan their work, to work with the committee. The Work Programme, it's important to say, will remain a live document and will be brought to each committee meeting. The recommendations outlined on page thirty-four and on page thirty-seven that are the proposed additions and amendments to the Work Programme since the last meeting. And I think it's important that I do draw members' attention to that. Amanda from Democratic Services at the side of me. Amanda, is there anything else that I perhaps not covered here? And this, of course, is an opportunity for members to ask any questions or make points.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, just to draw your attention to page thirty-four in the references from council section, which came from the council meeting on the sixth of September under the issue of quicker, safer and affordable journeys. So that has been included there for your consideration with the proposed action, just to include that.
Thank you very much, Amanda. I can see that I have got councillor Gilligan Kubo indicating. Councillor Gilligan Kubo?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I noticed that the strategic transport plan is going to be reviewed. We have a transport plan in Sheffield that runs from 2019 to 2035. I have read the transport plan and I think we can all agree that a transport plan in this current age has to look at how it's going to achieve net zero. I do think the current transport plan has a lot of really good ideas around net zero. As we know, transport is twenty-six percent of our emissions. Sixty percent of commutes are by car, forty percent are under one kilometer, which is a fifteen-minute walk. So I think it is really important that our transport plan focuses on how we can reduce the number of unnecessary or car journeys in Sheffield and promotes alternative ways of travelling by car. And there are a lot of moves in there already around safer and active travel options, reducing congestion, decarbonising transport, healthy lifestyles, cutting traffic noise, et cetera. So it's a really good plan already. The one worry I have is that I hope this is not going to be an opportunity to remove some measures from the current transport plan, namely workplace parking levy, which is also an opportunity to redirect people to use alternative forms of transport and encourage other journey times. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that. And of course, your comments have been noted. I think in our cross-party briefings, it was quite clear that the majority of attendees there did want to see this item there. And I think it's right and proper that we do update our transport plan and strategy to make sure that it recognises the challenges that this city now faces and is not stuck in time as well. But thank you. Councillor Sanga?
Thanks, Chair. Clearly, I, I welcome the fact that we're going to have the, the transport strategy coming, coming back to this committee. A couple of other points, and first of all, several points. In terms of clean air zone, very pleased that we are keeping to the commitment to bring this back to the November committee. So keen to know how it's going, what changes there are in terms of, in terms of air quality, although I, I did hear your earlier response in terms of diffusion tubes. So clearly it's not, it's going to be a challenge to understand what changes in terms of air quality that have been. But we, at the very least, we need to understand the operational aspects and what's been done with the money that's, that has been collected. So really looking forward to that report. Can I just ask in terms of the Rails Road Report, which we discussed last December, are we waiting for the Governance Committee to decide how, how referrals come back to policy committees before coming up with a date for this? It just feels to me it's a relatively small issue, but it's just stuck between the lack and this TRC without, without a date. I just wondered about that. Shall I just go on with the, the next question? Because the next question is even more, even more straightforward than that one. And that's the, the final three items which we've added but yet not yet had a date. How close to finding dates are we to those, those three items? Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Sanga. I've just conversed with officers at the side of me now and we think it would be most appropriate, at least for the first part of your question, to get you a written response to that. You also asked, I think, about dates for items that were on the forward work plan. Amanda, are you able to help us with that?
We don't have any set dates for those as yet. That will be done through the, the work planning that's done in the briefing sessions. So I'm unable to confirm at this time.
So I guess it's important, isn't it, that we explain to people who are following this outside the room that as well as these formal committee meetings, when we created the committee system, we also built in sessions that were outside of these formal committee meetings where members of committees work together to, will look at the work plan and to try and bring forward dates for certain items. And I think what we're saying there is that we would like to work together to make sure that there are dates on those. And also, Will Stewart, I think, is going to clarify?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. As part of the committee arrangements for this particular committee, we have held a number of work plan briefing sessions, which I think members found useful. So my proposal is that we continue to proceed with those work plan briefing sessions where we can get all the items out on the table, we can talk about potential dates and the leading to decisions. So there is a proposal to have one of those work plan briefing sessions this autumn. And I'll, following this meeting, circulate some options to members because I think that would be the best way for us to come together and, and agree what items are going on and timeframes around that. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Sanga?
Yeah, clearly I welcome, welcome the response in terms of another work plan briefing. I mean, you know, we're in, we're in September, this committee, new members came on in May. You know, the work, you know, we've got to get a certain amount of tasks done by, by the end of March. Very keen to understand and have a clear set of papers that are coming. I mean, clearly there are going to be times when, when other things, things go about. But I do think we need, need another session. As I say, in terms of, in, in, in terms of the Rails Road one, I am concerned that an item has got stuck. We clearly had a workshop yesterday and we didn't talk about it in particular. But the process for how lax interact with the policy committees, I know is on the Governance Committee's agenda. I just, I feel this item has got, ended up getting stuck. And I think it can be resolved outside of the rest of the process. But can I come back to the elephant in the room about today is fifteen hundred pages report. Now, clearly, last month, we had a thousand plus pages on the local plan and that was understandable for many of us because that was an important document about the next fifteen years. We had to meet, you know, very clear guidelines from government and from other agencies of what it needed to include. But fifteen hundred pages for a report, this is longer than any budget report I have received in my thirty-two years as a councillor. We have to do something about it. My, my fear is as we've gone electronic, we add more appendices to reports. In the days when we were all paper-based, we had a limit of ten, fifteen, twenty pages per item, whatever it was. And now that we've got the ability just to add things, because rightly, we don't print it out and you can see how, see the six copies, you know, it's fifteen hundred pages, it looks like this. It cannot happen again. Just to remind people, this is, this, this is War and Peace, this is only nine hundred and sixty pages long. You know, obviously happy to lend this to people so that they can practise their speed reading. But, you know, we as members only get this, the final version, eight or nine days. Fifteen hundred pages in nine days is hard work when we're on other committees. But happy to do that, except with volunteers, but there must be a limit in how long each items are. I know those of us who have certain planning committees, it's often, you know, we, planning officers try to strive for thirty pages. We've here, we've got three items which are incredibly important items and officers have done a lot of work on them. But five hundred pages an item, we just have to say no, never again. Thanks, Chair.
I think we should note what you have said, both the first item there that you raised. And we'll bring that back, of course, outside this room to those discussions that we have on our planning, the work plan. I think I've raised exactly the same issue about how many pages are attached to this current agenda. I think it is, of course, important that we give the items justice, given the public interest in many of them and how it impacts people's lives. But as you say, we do need to strike a balance. And I'm mindful, yes, of how long it takes us to read them and whether it is sustainable for us to be able to read that much. But also the officer time that it takes in constructing them as well. Not to mention, if we're printing them, the huge paper that goes to waste as well. So thank you for raising that point and I think we need to be mindful of it in the future as well. Okay, so that therefore takes us to item eight on the agenda, which is the Quarter One Budget Monitoring. This is on pages forty-nine to fifty-nine of the Agenda Pack. And the presenting officer will be Jane Wilby. Hi, Jane. Thank you very much for coming today.
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of the report is to bring the committee up to date with the Quarter One Monitoring Position for the Council for twenty-three, twenty-four. The full report was presented to the Finance Committee on the eleventh of September and a version to the Strategy and Resources Committee on the seventh of September. At Quarter One, the general fund is forecasting an overspend of seventeen point six million against a net revenue budget of four hundred and eighty-seven million, which represents a three point six percent overspend against net revenue budget. In twenty-one, twenty-two, the council identified a seventy million fund from general fund reserves, which we were able to draw on to manage the risk associated with budget delivery and our savings plans. After two years of budget deficits, we've now got thirty million left. The fund was intended to assist with the delivery of our Business Improvement Plans, our BIPs, and stabilise the delivery of our base budgets. If we do spend a further seventeen million this year, we will only have thirteen million of this fund remaining to manage risks and as we go into next year. The BIPs will continue to be a challenge this year. And of the forty-seven point seven general fund savings we need to make this year, we're forecast to deliver thirty-seven million of those, which is a seventy-eight percent delivery rate, which is an improvement on the twenty-two, twenty-three delivery rate, which was sixty-five percent. There are some one-off items included in our forecast outturn position that do mitigate the overall position amounting to about eighteen million in a year. And this includes some social care grant allocation in children's and in adults due to the uncertainty of whether we're going to continue to receive that funding in future years. We also have continuing healthcare income in adult social care and we have some historic balances that have supported some of the homelessness position that we've facing the issues this year. We've also got some allocations from specific reserves. So therefore, we've identified an underlying trend, the position is actually more like twenty-five million overspent. And this includes the increased demand that we're seeing for services in social care and in homelessness and the inflation pressures that we face. So the three key drivers of overspend are in adult social care, which has been better than in recent years with a trend of, well, three point two million at Quarter One. Education, children and families is almost a nine million overspend. And lots of that is to do with the high cost placements in residential placements for children, which is the biggest cause of overspend. And we also have some issues alongside foster carers, where we, we wanted to sort of recruit more foster carers this year. We've been unable to due to current market conditions. We've also had issues with home-to-school transport in our SCN transport, which is also causing an overspend. In housing this year, we've had probably in the region of eight point five million that's caused by homelessness and temporary accommodation in exempt and supported accommodation. And there's been an increased demand for this, in that service and a shortage of suitable accommodation, leading to an increased use of hotels for temporary accommodation and unregistered providers for supported exempt accommodation that's not fully subsidised by DWP. So these are key areas that are, that are faced by other local authorities nationally. And this has been reflected in first quarter forecast positions across the country. Our core city comparators are noting similar issues, particularly in regards to children's social care placements. In the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Committee, we are forecasting four hundred thousand underspend against a net revenue budget of forty million. In the table in section one point seven point four shows a breakdown of the budgets for the committee and it shows half a million overspend, which is actually an income shortfall in our planning services. The planning service have implemented an uplift to planning fees this year, but unfortunately have suffered in demand challenges, which has meant that the service is due to miss the income targets. This is somewhat offset by additional income in our highways, network management fees. This is where we're getting permit income, which has continued to deliver additional income for the council above budgeted levels. So it's worth noting that the medium-term financial analysis was presented to the Strategy and Resources Committee on the seventh of September, which set out the council's forecast position over the next four years and identified a funding gap of sixty-one million, eighteen of which falls into twenty-four, twenty-five. The committee targets for twenty-four, twenty-five are noted in the report alongside key assumptions for budget setting. The report requested services and committees to develop solutions and bring them into the November Policy Committee meetings. At the same time, still working hard to bring down that in-year overspend through ongoing work on recovery plans to support budget implementation plans. The Transport, Regeneration and Climate target is set at naught point three million for next year. So the real challenge for the council will be to consolidate and continue delivering those budget savings from the previous two years and maintain a stable baseline for council budgets. The report is to note the financial position of the council and the committee at Quarter One, twenty-three, twenty-four. The next update will be due in December to the committee. Happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jane, for, for running us through the budget monitoring, which is an important part of our agenda every time that we meet. Do I see any members indicating to ask questions on this? Jane, you must have done an excellent job. I can't see any. Oh, I can see Andrew and councillor Sanga.
Thank you Chair and thanks for the report. So I could just be clear, be clear in terms of the process, in terms of setting next year's budget. So it's going to come back in November in terms of suggestions and schemes. And am I also right in thinking that we've just heard some good news in terms of planning fees for next year in terms of the, the planning fees we will be able to charge? Because I understand that we don't, we're not able to set the rates ourselves on some of that planning income.
Thank you councillor Sangha. Jane, are you able to help us further understand that?
In terms of the budget setting process, so yes, committees are required to go away and discuss within committees and with officers to develop some proposals for the next year's budget to meet that budget target, taking into account current year, in-year pressures. It's all based on current assumptions as it stands. Clearly, we don't get the settlement from national government until later on in the year. So it's based on, you know, best estimates at this stage. As part of the assumptions set out in the medium term financial analysis, there's an assumption that there will be certain uplift in fees and charges that we, that we are able to do for those services that, that we are able to charge for. There is an assumption that, you know, they should be at least cost recovery so that no area should be subsidising services that should be able to be recovered through the fees that we charge. So as part of the process, we will be looking at all sales fees and charges across the council to make sure that we are uplifting in line with at least inflationary pressures across the service. I don't know whether Chloe can answer in any further detail about the planning fees?
Yes, so hi everyone, Chloe Parker, Senior Finance Manager. Yes, you're correct on the announcement in regards to planning fees. We've got further work to do in respect of how much that will be and what the restrictions are as well. So, but that will come back in due course to this committee once we know more. Thank you.
Councillor Sangha?
Yes, thank you, I mean, that's helpful. I think what, yeah, this is only our second year as committees. So I just think it's, it's clear to me that what we require as members is, we require, you know, suggestions and proposals that do carry broad cross-party support. And I would hope that offices are more imaginative than just bringing back the things that were free, that were given a red from each of the free groups last year. Because I think, I don't think much will have changed. So I hope offices are more imaginative and bring new suggestions rather than bringing back things which we know carried support from not one of the three major parties on the council. So if that could be borne in mind when they, in the work between now and November. Thanks Chair.
Thank you councillor Sangha. Do I have any further questions or comments from other members of the committee? I don't. Therefore, the report contains recommendations for approval. Are we all agreed with those recommendations? I can see no dissent, so therefore we have agreed and we have approved those recommendations. Thank you very much Jane and Chloe for coming before the committee today, it's really appreciated. That therefore moves us on to item nine of our agenda today, which is the Rother Valley Parking Scheme. That's contained on page 61 to 73 of the agenda pack and it's relatively short in contrast to the other reports. The presenting officer, I believe, is Susie and also I think Tom Finnegan-Smith as well. Susie and Tom, we look forward to you running us through the report.
Good afternoon. This is a report on the consultation response to proposals to introduce a parking scheme near Rother Valley Country Park on Rother Valley Way and Meddergate Avenue. The scheme is aimed at improving access in the area and it looks to address the problems with parking that occurs near the junctions and the footways predominantly because of visitors to Rother Valley Country Park. The scheme includes double yellow lines and removing the roundabout at the junction of Rother Valley Way and Meddergate Avenue from the network. It will physically stay, but changing this area to provide additional parking near to the entrance of Rother Valley Park. Letters were sent to 216 local residents and businesses and in total, we've got five responses from the public and three of these were formal objections to the scheme. The objections mainly relate to the proposed parking restrictions and there were concerns that would push more parking onto nearby residential roads. Changes have been made to the scheme design following the TRO consultation. I know prior to that, we also did a consultation with the residents before we did the official traffic regulation order. So these changes include reducing the double yellow lines to provide more gaps for parking at the request of residents, the addition of a road hump on Rother Valley Way, a new footway and pedestrian refuge island on Rother Valley Way, improvements to the surfacing and visibility of the existing car park on Rother Valley Way to make it more attractive for people to park there first before parking on the street, and additional waiting restrictions on some of the streets leading from Meddergate Avenue in case of displacement of parking. And in our office's responses, the remaining parking restrictions proposed are there at junctions and at locations where hazardous parking is taking place. And then in order to, these will remain in order to improve road safety in the area and access for people. The report recommends that councillors consider the objection and the council's response is detailed in the report and approve the making of the amended traffic regulation order. Note that all the respondents will be informed accordingly and approve the implementation of the amended scheme as it goes through the, you know, subject to the capital gateway process. Thank you.
Thank you very much Susie for running us through that report. Do I see any contributions from members in the room? Councillor Shaw?
Thank you Chair and thank you for the report. It's just to note that I know that this scheme has, has been supported by the local councillors for Bateham. And I believe it was councillor Woolhouse who actually presented a petition about the parking issues around the area in a time before she was elected. And it's quite notable that there's only been, well, three objections to the scheme, which is very low as far as these kind of schemes go. And just to show that the scheme is sorely needed and welcomed by the residents. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Shaw. Councillor Mizrao?
Thank you. I noticed in the report, there's a comment on active travel has been partially obscured, but I'd be interested to know how the scheme helps people who want to get their bike to the park by foot and by bike. I'd be particularly interested to increase enforcement measures in the area to stop pavement parking along the strip towards the roundabout. I wonder if the local area committee for that area could be asked to perhaps fund bollards along there to stop cars continuing to park on the pavement, which obviously prevents people from walking safely.
Tom?
Thank you Chair, thanks for the question. So in terms of kind of cycling and walking access, you're right, you know, the area has been kind of heavily parked up before. The waiting restrictions in particular around junctions are there to maintain sightlines and that safety around the junctions. As part of introducing the kind of extended restrictions, there will be, as the report notes, some further enforcement. So there's that commitment there to, to kind of where possible, do some proactive enforcement. Really important to make sure that initially when those restrictions are in that, that people do know that they're going to be enforced. In terms of active travel more broadly, so cycling, again, the safety around junctions, I think is the most important issue. Where there are gaps and parking may still be available, there are risks that people do park on the footway. That's something we're going to have to have a look at once the scheme's in. There may be options for us to take forward further discussions with the local area committee in that area, should further measures be required. Footway parking is, as you know, is a really challenging issue for us to address. Again, we have called previously for greater powers to enforce that, so that we're not having to introduce bollards on footways, further restricting the space as a result of the bollards going in, you know. It's almost in some ways the same effect of people parking on the footway. So we continue to call for that. The Department for Transport haven't responded yet to the consultation that was undertaken on that. We understand that there are delays in that response coming out. But certainly at a local level, should there be some issues that need to be responded to post-implementation, there is a space there for a conversation with the local area committee.
Thank you. Do I see any other indications from members? Well, if not, I think, you know, I should thank Susie and Tom for bringing the report. I think having knocked on doors and spoken to residents in the area, I know that people in the community have been making a case for measures to be put in place for some time to deal with problem parking. And I know that's been supported by their excellent local MP Clyde Betts, who's constantly getting in touch with me and council officers to make the case for transport and parking improvements in the south east of Sheffield. And that should be applauded and shows how we can all work constructively for the benefit of citizens of the city. So that therefore takes us to a, making a decision on this report. The report contains recommendations for approval. Are we all agreed? I think I can see from the nods in the room that we are all agreed. So that therefore has been carried unanimously. So thank you very much. Thank you Susie and Tom for bringing that and for your hard work in producing those papers as well. That therefore takes us on to item 10, which is a report related to the Experimental Traffic Regulation Order for the Sheaf Valley Cycle Route. Tom, I am aware that we did have discussions about you wanting to introduce all of these items together or at least provide us with a little bit of an overview. Is that the case?
That's right. So my colleagues will kind of feed that into the introduction to the first item. And so there'll be some preamble, shall we say, to the main substantive kind of item.
Thank you. And it's good to see Sam and Dominic here today. So Sam and Dominic, if you want to see the report, that'd be brilliant. Thank you.
Thank you. So I thought to start with, talk a little bit and give a bit of background about the Connecting Sheffield Programme, which kind of justifies sort of the reasons behind schemes, not just the Sheaf Valley one ball, so the Netheredge, Crooks, Woolley, Active Travel neighbourhoods. So Connecting Sheffield, the programme sets out a long-term vision for the future of travel within our city. And by creating high-quality, convenient and safer routes for walking, cycling and public transport, we can provide real opportunities for people to make greener, cleaner and healthier travel choices. A truly multimodal transport network offers inclusive economic, social and environmental opportunities that benefit everyone, regardless of their age, gender or background. But this is about more than just getting from A to B. It's about safer, cleaner, lower traffic roads, people-friendly streets and livable neighbourhoods. It's about making the city a better place to live, work, learn and play both now and in the future. For Sheffield's economy to thrive, we need a reliable, efficient and well-connected transport network. People and businesses rely on their cars, vans and other forms of motorized transport to get around and to operate successfully. However, as we've already pointed out, it's estimated that 60% of commuter journeys are made by car and 40% of these journeys are less than a kilometre, a distance that can be walked within 15 minutes or cycled within just five. And it's these shorter journeys that we need to keep in mind when considering active travel infrastructure schemes such as these. Sheffield City Council's local draft plan shows that current growth and development in the city is expected to continue to 2039, which includes an estimated 18,000 new homes planned within or near the city centre. As we've highlighted, the 2019 to 2035 transport strategy highlights that simply to maintain current traffic volumes across the city is dependent upon making alternative travel choices possible. Failure to empower more people to use active and sustainable modes of travel will ultimately hit drivers and public transport users the hardest as increased demand for travel is likely to lead to longer and more frequent traffic congestion events. In February 2019, the Sheffield City Council declared a climate emergency and this summer committee agreed to the first tranche of the 2030 net zero route maps. Furthermore, the South Yorkshire Mayoral Combined Authorities Division for Transport aims to put pedestrians and cyclists at the heart of the transport authorities. Sorry, I've lost my train of thought there. It's at the heart of the Combined Authorities' plans to address carbon emissions. Transport, as we've said again, is estimated to make up 26% of carbon emissions. So it's vital that we support active and alternative, and attractive alternatives to private vehicle journeys. The Sheaf Valley Cycle Route and Active Travel neighbourhoods directly contribute to the South Yorkshire Mayoral Combined Authorities Strategic and Economic Plan in the following ways. They unlock capacity and improve future efficiency and resilience across the transport network by reducing the number of shorter car journeys through a shift towards walking and cycling. Therefore, they have the potential to reduce the number and severity of congestion events. They provide a more equitable transport system that works for all by connecting housing, employment, schools, shops, services and amenities through safer, attractive and accessible cycling and walking infrastructure, which includes areas of low car ownership. They support increased physical health and mental wellbeing that can combat loneliness by making it easy for people to get outside and make more local journeys on foot or by bike. And they support reduction in transport-related carbon emissions and a thriving local economy. Many people choose to travel by car because it's convenient. Many people feel that they have no other choice. Road safety is regularly highlighted as a major barrier as to why people don't walk and cycle more often. Perhaps more importantly however, it's worth bearing in mind that people, that many people simply don't have access to a car at all. If we look specifically at the Sheaf Valley, the percentage of households with access to a car in parts of Woodseats and Maysbrook is over 20%. In parts of Lowfield and Highfield, it's between 40 to 50%. And in areas of the city, over 74% of homes do not have access to a car. Alternative transport options are also important to those families with just one car. This accounts for 40 to 50% of homes in Woodseats, Maysbrook, Netheredge, Healy and parts of Brinkliffe, Millhouses, Bowchief and Bent Green. Parents want to be able to walk to school with their children. Young people want to be able to walk and travel independently to education settings, training, jobs and amenities. And disabled or less able people want to be able to access local shops and services safely and independently without the need to drive, buy a second car or spend money on expensive taxi fares. As highlighted in section 1.2 of the report, the Sheaf Valley Cycle Route provides a safe, low-traffic active travel route between Norton Hammers and Sheffield City Centre. It connects residential and commercial areas, transport hubs and centres of education, whilst tying into existing and planned active travel infrastructure, including the Netheredge Active Travel neighbourhood, the Netheredge City Centre Cycle Route, also known as Netheredge Wedge, Greater Green, the Darnall Attcliff City Centre TTF scheme and other schemes across the city, Neepsend and Kellum. It provides a much better experience for cyclists than other alternatives on Chesterfield Road and Aberdil Road. The focus of the report today is very much on the interventions associated with the Experimental Traffic Order. Point closures or modal filters, blocks, bollards or planters to most, prevent through traffic at key locations, whilst modifications to parking restrictions create clear ways for people who choose to travel by bike or on foot. These measures can be implemented on roads without space for segregated cycle lanes, are significantly less costly to implement and are an effective way of creating direct, safe, comfortable and attractive cycling and walking routes. The report produced to inform committee decision today highlights in section 1.4 that the measures being implemented have achieved their intended outcomes. Rates of active travel on this corridor have significantly increased since 2021, with a number of cycle strips reaching record highs this summer. Data also highlighted in section 1.4 suggests that there have been some changes in vehicle movements across some of the junctions as people adjust their journeys due to changes in the road network. Increases in vehicle counts are isolated to specific junctions and at specific times of the day, whilst overall traffic volumes remain largely unchanged. The impact this has had on vehicle flows and journey times is not considered significant enough to justify the removal of the interventions and can in part be addressed by changes to traffic signals as proposed as part of bus corridor improvement schemes on Chesterfield Road, Aberdil Road and Echolsall Road. along Chesterfield Road, Aberdil Road and Ecclesall Road. It's for these reasons that the report to the committee recommends that the members approve the implementation of the Sheaf Valley Cycle Route in its entirety. In other words, agree that all interventions associated with ETO should be made permanent. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dominic, for presenting that report. I propose to take each and every one of these items in two parts, really. Firstly, an opportunity to ask questions of officers. And then the second part, an opportunity for a discussion amongst members about the recommended course of action. I do see councillor Merzaro indicating that she would like to speak. But I also know that Robert from Legal did give me a heads-up beforehand that I was to go to him to give us an update about the report. Robert?
Thank you, Chair. So this was to add a clarificatory, extra limb to the recommendations. I had some correspondence with Mr Whiteley. And we agreed that the additional line, which I think Alan might be able to share to the screen, should be added. And that's to authorise officers to progress the formal revocation of those elements of the ETO which were not implemented. That's on the understanding that whilst the language talks about complete implementation of the ETO, actually, there were some parts of it. And I understand that's the, there's around 30 metres, six parking spaces of DYL. W O lines, there we go, the experts in the room, that were not implemented on Little London Road to help mitigate local business concerns over loss of parking. So for complete clarity, that part will be revoked because that hasn't been implemented in the experimental order. Hopefully, that's clear, Chair.
Thank you. That's certainly clear to me. I hope it is to other members. Can I just ask for clarification there, councillor Shaw and councillor Auckland? You're asking to put on the list rather than to ask about, okay, ask about the matter that was being raised there. Councillor Merzaro?
Thank you. Not a question of search, but I would like to commend officers for an excellent report which states clearly the benefits of the scheme and how it's succeeded. And also the importance of schemes like this for so many aspects of life, not just transport and health, but crime reduction as well. And also the benefits to the wider transport scheme. So I'll be supporting your recommendations in full. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Merzaro. Councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Chair. I have two questions and a fairly long comment. Would you like me to save the comment till the second?
I think so. If you could ask the question of officers and then we'll have an opportunity to ask, to make the wider point there after we've done that section.
Yeah. Thank you. So regarding, so thank you very much for the report. It is, you know, very thorough. So regarding the, when the modal filters were first installed on Sheaf Valley, there was several weeks where they were repeatedly vandalised. At first, it was just, I think, plastic fencing that was used rather than like concrete blocks. So that happened for some time. So my question really, could that not have been foreseen since there had been similar issues when similar measures have been put in elsewhere in the city? And the cost to the council and the disruption to the trial? Could that have been avoided? And if there's similar trials in 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 future, have those lessons kind of been been learned about what kind of measures are best to use? And then my second question is, so this has been a trial scheme and people may not have been using the route because of it being a trial. You know, people attempted to get an e-bike or something. That's quite an expensive outlay. So we've got like the the numbers of the amount of increased cycling and walking along the route. Would it be reasonable to assume that if these measures are approved and the scheme is made permanent, then that increase would be even greater? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. Dominic or Sam, were you able to help our understanding of that?
Yeah, so I think in terms of concrete blocks and whatnot, I mean, I think it's fair to say that no one really wants to see a concrete block as a measure to implement modal filters. But, you know, we did learn lessons a little bit late. I guess we gave people in different areas of the city that benefit the doubt wanted to try planters and other softer measures. Clearly, they were being vandalised. And so I think moving forward, if we were to trial schemes like this going forward, I think we'd probably have to look at the sort of concrete block option initially, just to begin with, with the assumption that there is a sort of local minority that dislikes the schemes. In terms of increased numbers of cycling, I think it's right to point out that the complete cycle route isn't yet completed. We know that Shoreham Street, the northern end of the scheme, is yet to be completed. So I think it's fair to say that, you know, should the scheme get approved and as the scheme develops further, there will be further increases in walking and cycling. We've got schemes such as Better Points, which we're hoping to launch this year, which will help to promote routes like this and other things going on in and around the city as part of the Connecting Sheffield Programme.
Thank you, councillor Shaw, and thank you for your question. Thank you, Dominic, for those answers. Councillor Auckland?
So flip side of councillor Shaw's question, were these measures to be made permanent? Any chance of a bit of beautification of concrete blocks? So particularly the end of a Hackthorn Road, which was an add-on to the scheme? A welcome one, actually, I feel. But possibly elsewhere, something to make them more attractive? The couple of questions about Little London Road, which have been put to me by constituents, so I'll ask them. One, wouldn't a signalised operation of some description, a one-way pedestrian phase, possibly? Is there a solution that that works under that railway bridge that isn't a point blockage? And another suggestion that's been put is the possibility of, for want of a better term, a spider bridge type solution underneath the network rail structure. So I just wanted to clear those two points about alternatives there. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Auckland. And I just did a search there just to assure myself that beautification was actually a word. And it is, it's the action or process of improving the appearance of a person or a place. So yes, can we introduce beautification of some of these measures? And the other question that councillor Auckland raised.
I think it's certainly something we would be aiming to do as part of the scheme, the sort of scale and scope of what that would look like.
I'm really asking about, has the money run out, I think, as well?
I perhaps like Tom cover that one. But obviously, we'd want to work with councillors. Potentially, it's a community engagement opportunity with local people to see what the measures they'd like to see. Obviously, we'd have to source the appropriate funding depending on the scale and the scope of those interventions. But certainly, anything that's going to help beautify Little London Road, particularly with new houses and whatnot being built down there, is something we'd aim for. In terms of sort of signalisation and more sort of extreme spider bridge measures, I think there's obviously a cost implication involved in anything like that, which would far exceed anything that we've used as part of the filter on Little London Road. Obviously, you've got the Sheaf River right there. You've got a rail line. I think practically implementing something like that would be an engineering challenge. But I don't know if you have anything else to add on that, Tom, in terms of cost and whatnot?
Yeah, I can do. Thank you, councillor, for the question. The, I think the principle around kind of what measure is right in terms of, you know, would signalisation work? And, you know, kind of a shuttle flow of traffic? I think the challenge is that, you know, to maintain a high-quality corridor for cycling that is leading to the kind of volume, you know, the volume of increased activity. It needs to be really high quality. So that space, the dedicated space for two-way cycling through there, needs to be sufficient. So even a one-way shuttle flow would be really challenging. And I think in terms of constructing a bridge to the standard and width that we'd require would be extremely cost prohibitive. So I think that, you know, those options aren't practicable to deliver the kind of quality of corridor improvement that we need and to hopefully see the kind of numbers grow even further, as we've just mentioned. In terms of beautification, absolutely. I think we are very conscious as part of the Sheaf Valley Corridor and our Active Travel Neighbourhoods that we started off with a process of trying to introduce planters that were a bit more aesthetically pleasing. Some of the challenges around vandalism meant that we've had to kind of either reinforce with concrete blocks or replace with concrete blocks. And that's so that the trials could kind of really move forward and the traffic management principles around them maintained through that period. Now, we are able to work with South Yorkshire Mayoral Combined Authority. If the schemes are approved today, then we will be having further discussions about future programmes. And there is flexibility for us to bring funding forward from future transport programmes in South Yorkshire for this type of improvement. Clearly, we haven't included budget in our programme this year because we didn't want to make the assumption that schemes would be made permanent. But that is a position that is open to us. And we have had conversations with the MCA about taking that approach. We, you know, if these schemes are retained, which is the recommendation in front of you, then we do want to move forward, provide some real improvement in those local areas so that the cycling measures are in place, that they are attractive and welcoming and have that broader appeal to the local residents and community where they exist. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Tom. Do I see any other member wishing to make a contribution in terms of asking a question? Okay, so that therefore moves us into the second part of this item, which is an opportunity for us to make wider points about the recommendations and way forward. I did have councillor Shaw indicating it a while ago, but other members are also welcome to do so. Thank you. Councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you again, Dominic, Tom and Sam for your report. Based on the information in the reports and what's been given to us previously in briefings and things, I'm fairly confident in saying that this scheme has, you know, been hugely successful in achieving its stated aims and I'm very happy to support it. There's been a 67% increase in cycling alone along the route, with up to 207% increase in certain locations, compared to basically a plus 4% increase in cycling citywide. Yeah, I'm very pleased to see that the, you know, public concerns about impact on traffic and air pollution and other potential issues, thankfully, haven't really been realised. And, you know, any increases noted in the report are in line with basically the control sites and other data that we request to help us make an informed decision. Yeah, I'm pleased to see that the permanent measures of this scheme that outside the ETO, such as the new pedestrian crossings on Walsley Road and Bramall Lane, the new segregated cycle lane on Asline Road are well advanced, maybe not fully complete, but they're on their way. And, you know, officers and other councillors are well familiar with my recent concerns about, you know, delays and issues with the scheme, particularly around Shoreham Street measures. And, you know, the risk of increased costs as a result of inflation. I think one of the main reasons why I believe this scheme has been as successful as it has been is the level of public consultation and engagement with councillors in contrast to some other schemes that this council's done. So back in 2020, following the Shalesmore cycle lane trial, and that was very controversial, councillors were approached by officers for ideas for other schemes. And Sheaf Valley and the Atecliff Road trials were one of the ones that were proposed by the Lib Dems to put forward for ATF2 funding. The pre-consultation via Connecting Sheffield for the scheme had the most responses than any other and notably was majority positive. So there was, you know, the public were well engaged from the start and, you know, were welcoming it. And councillors were involved, myself, councillor Barbara Masters and Simon Clever Jones. We walked the entire route in July 2021 and provided suggestions and feedback about potential issues about the scheme, which councillors and officers thankfully listened to us. So I would urge members to support the scheme and be proud of the success that it's had and maybe look to this scheme as an example of how to improve other ones that this council brings forward. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. Thanks to you for the work that you do with the with the cycle forum as well. Do I see any other contributions from members? Councillor Auckland, apologies, you were on my list and I missed you out. I'm being very bad. Councillor Auckland?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I'll give a shout-out for the Little Hackthorn Road scheme that has solved a problem in Woodseats about people cutting through. That's been on the table for 20-odd years. And eventually, we've come up with an answer. And although it caused quite a lot of correspondence into my email box at the time, fairly evenly divided amongst the residents on those roads, but also people in the wider area who were against it because they were concerned about queuing at the Scarsdale Road junction. That's with the benefit of experience, I've seen it working, people seeing immediately affected how it's improved conditions for them. I'd say now it's gained acceptance to the point that I only ever get complaints about the lack of enforcement, which is one of the things that we might be able to attend to when we get moving traffic powers. In regard to Little London Road, over the years, again, as a ward councillor, I have had complaints where people have pointed out how dangerous that railway bridge point is on Little London Road, particularly back in the day for the lack of pedestrian facilities because there's next-to-no pavement. And you'd certainly have to think carefully about trying to venture through that particular location. And the point that I've made to supporters and critics who like, well, obviously for the alternatives, attractive but too expensive, anything that involves network rail might never happen in the next 15 years, et cetera, et cetera. But in terms of people who've not been in favour, you simply can't get all modes safely through that point under that railway bridge. It's, in my opinion, just not possible. You have to make a choice there at that point between walking, cycling and road space for normal road vehicles. And personally, given the alternatives, I think that's a fine choice to have said walking and cycling first. I also feel, in terms of the Sheaf Valley routes, that if not there, if not somewhere where we're going to make that investment in cycling, and I note the improvements that it's got, Chair, I think these are very welcome improvements. If we're not going to do something like that, that involves change for people, then really, they almost may as well give up, is the truth of it, because we've got to try and make these changes. It also makes me a bit happier, Chair, because I know some people, some of my cycling friends say, well, you're interested in Ian, his buses, really, something with a wheel at Iver Corner. So I'm pleased to be able to say that I'm interested in something mainly where it's got a wheel at either end and people are under their own power. So I'll be supporting the officer's recommendation on this one, Chair. I think at some points, there are some choices we have to be making and the recommendations are the right choices. I don't mind constituents dropping me a line saying I'm stupid because who knows on transport. I do apologise to the person who described my tentative, minded support of the scheme as evil. I've not been mentioned as evil before, but I take it that they were well-meaning in their opposition and it's something that I'll just have to live with because these things are highly complex and complicated things to deal with. And actually, if something's about 50/50, we're probably doing okay. And I think that with the benefit of the experiments, this is a scheme that can be supported. So I will be. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Auckland. Do I see any other contributions from members? I don't. So that therefore takes us to vote on this item if needed. Of course, the report contains recommendations for approval. I'm going to ask whether we are all agreed. If any member wishes to dissent, please do raise your hand. I don't see any dissent, so that therefore means that we all are agreed and this report was passed unanimously. Thank you very much for the contribution and thank you to officers for putting that report together. I have had a request for a comfort break and I'm minded to agree with it. I think it's really important that we do so for quality reasons. And we're going to have a brief comfort break for five minutes. So that means coming back around five to four. Okay, so that therefore takes us on to, as we've now passed item 10 unanimously, item 11, which is on the Active Travel Neighbourhood ETRO review for Crooks and Walkley. This is on page 587 to 611 of the agenda pack. I'm not sure whether we're quite at War and Peace levels yet, but it goes up to 611. And the presenting officer is Paul Sullivan. Paul, are you happy to run us through the report?
Thank you, Chair, yes. And I will try and be as brief as I possibly can. So, yeah, I'm going to cover the Crooks and Walkley Active Travel Neighbourhood, which was the primary driver behind an active travel neighbourhood is obviously to create a better place to live or a timely and cost-effective way of developing an active travel network across the city, something that we are tasked with and something that would come in a lot cheaper than if we just concentrated on building protected lanes. So to keep you an idea, a protected cycle lane, you're talking around about a million pounds a kilometre. And we could quite easily cover off a couple of active travel neighbourhoods without sort of funding. So the report covers Crooks and Walkley, but it was quite obvious from early on that the area needed to be split. And in discussion with war councillors, we've sort of decided to treat the two areas separately, even though they are obviously neighbours and there is some sort of relationship between the two. Implementation didn't go smoothly. I think that's an understatement. It took considerable time for the measures to go in place. Not all the measures actually went in place. And those that did, most suffered from vandalism. We also had issues around road safety with traffic bypassing the planters or the blocks using the pavement. And at no one point did we have all the measures in place. So as you'll see later on, it became quite hard to judge the effectiveness of both areas. Some of the more strategic issues were perhaps, you know, these two areas sat in isolation despite some of the measures that you'd associate with an active travel neighbourhood being implemented in other parts of Walkley. There's still some distance from other key centres such as Hillsborough and the city centre. And what became apparent, particularly through the early part of the consultation, was there's quite a reliance on public transport in that area. And people that were quite interested in seeing an active travel neighbourhood also wanted to see improvements in public transport. There were quite a few of the residents that explained to me, particularly in the drop-in sessions, how they liked to walk during the better weather, obviously, how they liked to walk down into the city centre and then get the bus home. But that was becoming more problematic for them. So as I've just alluded to, there are high levels of walking in that particular area. I think the indication was that around 80% of those people that we surveyed in the early part of the scheme actually do walk to either down to South Road to Walkley or up to Crooks. And, you know, even with that high level of walking, you'll see again that has increased. So with Crooks, very difficult to judge whether what we've done there has been successful or not. There were approximately 16 measures earmarked for Crooks. I think five or six remain. The pedestrian crossings and the school street, well-supported. I don't think we've got many discerning comments on those. But because of the lack of measures and the fact that they weren't all in at the same time, it is very difficult to judge whether what we've done up there has worked. In Walkley, slightly different story, where though it did take some time for implementation to take place, all the measures bar one are in and that one is not in based on consultation between war councillors and residents. So just going back to the consultation, there are basically three phases of consultation. Pre-consultation, where a postcard leaflet was sent out to all, addresses it in the area. Some workshops that took place in the evening to try and boost participation. And then right at the very beginning of the scheme, we had some quite successful drop-in sessions, which I would highly recommend as a model for taking that type of consultation forward. Basically, we had small tables chaired by a ward councillor, one officer, probably about four or five tables, 15 or 20 people around the table. All were very comfortable in talking, despite whether they approved of what we were doing or didn't. We then went into the live scheme. The scheme went live and the level of consultation ramped up. And then we've had the post-scheme consultation. But in total, we've had a total of 1,800 responses from an area where we estimate the population to be around just shy of 20,000. Now, we know it's difficult. We're in a world now where we've got to, you know, implement things that aren't acceptable to everybody. And during this process, I had sight of the Connecting Sheffield inbox. It was my job to sort of move the emails to whichever client was looking after the scheme. And two, I can remember of the sort of 500 emails we got very early in the scheme's implementation, two emails jumped out, which sort of summed up the difficulties and the issues that we have to face. The first email was from a resident within an active travel neighbourhood who explained that since the road had been closed near her, she was able to open her windows. She was able to open her windows and enjoy the afternoon. She was able to, she could open her windows previously, obviously, but she couldn't stand the noise, the dust that was being created from the traffic. And so she was delighted with what we'd done on her particular road. Another email from a person that used the active travel neighbourhood to get from A to B, but not actually within the active travel neighbourhood, who explained what we'd done had put extra miles onto his journey. But then went on to explain that he did have four or five other options to drive from A to B within the city, but they were less convenient than what he was currently doing. So as we developed through, as the consultation has developed and as the scheme has drawn to a close, we undertook perception surveys over the summer, which is quite interesting because they didn't sort of tally the face-to-face perception surveys, didn't sort of tally with the consultation responsive that we'd received previously. And again, that perception was not really borne out by the data. So what does the data show? Well, in both areas, we've seen minimal changes in speed of traffic. We've seen minimal changes in journey time, counting additional seconds rather than additional minutes. And air quality, though slightly worse than the previous year, is still better than pre-Covid times. And we also had a look at crime levels. And they generally fluctuate anyway. And there was no real consistent evidence from the crime levels to say that the active travel neighbourhood had benefited or made worse that particular statistic. So what happened to the traffic? Because obviously it's got to go somewhere. So in Crooks, we did see increases predominantly traffic on School Road. But bear in mind that at no one time did we see any of the measures all at once in Crooks. So how much of that increase in traffic is down to the measures that did go in? And how much is just to the post-Covid period as people return to more normal working patterns? And where we have seen numbers, it's equated to perhaps one car every two minutes, which could be, you know, considerable for some people. Everywhere else within Crooks, the changes have been minimal and probably what you'd expect to see. And I think in the transport world, we do sort of tend to work where percentage changes are very small. So anything that comes in at around 30% and above does seem significant. But in terms of actual numbers, it is probably not that many. And similarly with pedestrians through Crooks, while we've seen, as I alluded to earlier, 80% of the residents were saying they walk up to Crooks, we've actually seen a 30% increase on that number while the scheme's been in place. Through Walkley, that number has remained fairly consistent. In terms of cycling, because obviously we want to encourage cycling in that area and that's one of the aims of the scheme, we have seen increases on some corridors, Western Road for instance. But that's been mirrored by decreases on the Heavy Gate Road, Crooks more. And again, the percentage looks massive, an 86% increase in cycling along Western Road. But actually, it only equates at the moment to 42 cyclists. So there's more work to be done there. In Walkley, the vast majority of measures remain. So what's happened to the traffic in Walkley? Well, Heavy Gate Road has appeared to have taken the brunt of the traffic that perhaps used to cut down Greenhouse Street and Matlock Road. And while the manual count has shown a 2% decrease in traffic in that area, we also have an automatic counter on that particular stretch, which has been counting consistently since November 21. That indicates that there's actually been a 16% increase. And again, quite a significant figure, but not necessarily great in number, but obviously more than the residents had experienced in previous years. In fact, it equates to somewhere in the region of 200 vehicles over a 24-hour period. On South Road, we've seen an increase of 50% of traffic turning right off Walkley Lane, again because they can no longer use some of the residential roads in that particular area. And that's borne out by Greenhouse Street, which is one of those residential roads where we've actually seen a 34% decrease in traffic using the junction with South Road. So that sort of demonstrates that the measures where we have implemented them are working. So the report sets out all the recommendations, which are quite long and fairly complicated. But I think I think we are fairly comfortable with what they state. We would like to, you know, recommend that we make permanent what remains in Crooks, particularly the measures supporting School Street and pedestrian crossings and those measures that remain in Walkley. And then taking into account Robert's text about officers will invoke, I've written it down again, the officers will invoke the verification process in relation to those elements of the ETO which have been implemented. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul, for taking us through that really extensive report, which has been a huge piece of work for officers over the years. I propose to take this in, I guess, two sections again, where we would first have any questions to officers. Then we would have a debate about the, amongst members, about the course of action. If there were any amendments at that stage, that would be an opportunity to bring them forward. And of course, we'd have a discussion about them. So do I see any indications from members wishing to ask questions of officers about the report? Councillor Sangha.
Thanks, Chair, and thanks, Paul, for the report. And clearly, it's been a very, very long, very long journey. I just want to go back to the drop-in sessions. I mean, I was lucky enough to go to one of the drop-in sessions and sit in. And I know councillor Miskell's predecessor, councillor Ickmal, also joined me at that occasion. I just wonder if a key learning point could be that we use these drop-in sessions at the start, facilitated by the LACs. I know, you know, obviously I was in the position of being Chair of South West Lac and it was very clear that we needed to spend time on this item over and above lac business, that this was so important. And all the drop-in sessions that we had for Crooks were very well attended. And as the officers already said, it wasn't that everybody was against every bit of the scheme. People were coming with lots of complicated, complex contributions. And it was really good that we had those drop-in sessions. But could we use that as a, should we make sure that's part of the toolkit we use for future schemes? Thanks, Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Sangha. Do I see anyone else, any other member wishing to ask a question? I don't. So that therefore takes us into the second part of this particular item. Are there any particular, any points that members would like to make about the course of action here? Apologies. It's been pointed out to me that, of course, the officer would perhaps like to answer the question, which will be a good thing, wouldn't it? That's my fault. Apologies. Tom.
Thanks, Chair. I think the short answer is yes. You'll be aware from the timeline of the project, the challenges that we had right at the start of our broader Connecting Sheffield programme that effectively kick-started during kind of Covid years and some of those difficult periods around lockdown and not being able to meet in person. I think, yes, you know, a conversation with the community, discussions in person where they can see plans kind of, you know, without maybe kind of proposals is the way that we would want to move forward with similar schemes to this in the future. And, you know, I think there were kind of opportunities for people to engage at that very early stage. As Paul has mentioned, there were online kind of workshops. People could kind of dial in and listen and kind of pose questions. But yes, moving forward, hopefully we won't be in that same position again and holding workshops in person will be possible.
Thank you very much, Tom. And now I'm doing this properly. I'll see if any other member would wish to make, or ask a question. Councillor Muzro.
It's not actually a question, it's a comment, so I can wait.
A comment, yeah, we'll move into that part. Councillor Muzro.
Yeah, I welcome measures that enable more walking and cycling and reduce physical inactivity and social isolation. These projects, as the report noted, help to change the road hierarchy and shift social norms away from streets being dominated by through traffic. And it supports social cohesion. I'd like to make reference as well to a report from the Imperial College of London that stated that LTNs represent one of the most important policies for ensuring less reliance on cars and that those least likely to use motor vehicles are most likely to be harmed by them through road danger, air pollution and traffic noise. And this relates to the River Edge scheme as well. So I will be supporting the recommendations from the officers. from the officers.
Thank you very much councillor Merzaro. councillor Sanger?
Thanks Chair, I mean, I'm, I'm glad we've got, we're, we're able to make some progress with this. I'm not convinced that the way we've gone about it has been the best possible in terms of consultation, I'm not convinced that this live experiments where the level of consultation at the start of the process, you know, it, it, you know, the, the level of consultation at the start of the process for, for this one was not as much as it, as it could have been or should have been. Now, as we've heard, some of that was because of COVID and the lockdown, but I just think, given, given what we're trying to do here, which is about changing the choices people take, I just feel we need to, this is an education role and a, and a leadership role, it's not about imposing our, our solutions on people on day one. And I just feel where we've got to is down to the hard work of, of clearly of officers, but also of the local members. Clearly, I'm not going to speak much about Walkley, because I was more involved in, in the Crooks scheme, but, you know, clearly my colleague councillor Tim Huggan was involved, as were other, were other elected members in, in Crooks Crosspool. I understand a parallel process went on in Walkley, so whereas we had an initial proposal for a very large scheme, what we've now got is a scheme which carries the support of local members of both parties in Crooks Crosspool, but also, I, I understand, the, the local members in Walkley. So it's been an iterative process, and I'm not sure if that's the best use of officer time or member time to be quite such an iterative process, and I do think we need to get more of the public on board at the early stage of the process. But I think what we've got now is very good in terms of, you know, the school street measures in Westway School, I think that's been called out, been, people have been calling out for that for, for years. I think that the road closures we've got on Hans Road and Newant Lane, I, I think we've now got a set of, and a whole series of, of other, of, of other measures that are going to become permanent, I think that does carry a broad sway to support, so I will be voting, I will be supporting the officer's recommendation. But as I say, I, I don't feel the process has been as painless as it could have been, and I think we need to learn lessons, because we are going to need to continue to engage the people of Sheffield in this discussion and this debate, because active travel is something that will be, is in the current transport strategy, and when we look at the new trans, the revised transport strategy in a few months' time, active travel and how we give people choices to encourage them to cycle and walk and use public transport as preferred options, that will remain, but we need to find further ways of taking people with us. So I, I welcome this report, I welcome the recommendations we've got to, but I think it's been a painful journey, and I just think we should make sure we learn as many lessons from this, because we will be looking at other areas, we might do it in a different way, but there'll be other areas where we will need to look at interventions. Thanks Chair.
Thank you councillor Sanger. Do I see any other member wishing to make a contribution? I don't. So that therefore takes us to the final part of discussing this item. So of course, the report contains recommendations for approval. Are we all agreed? If any member wishes to dissent, please do raise your hand. I don't see any member raising their hand, therefore this has been agreed unanimously. Thank you very much to officers for producing that report. I would also like to thank residents and local businesses for all their input on the active travel neighbourhood schemes in both Crooks and Walkley, as well as the diligent work of local councillors in working with officers to find solutions. Their work, as we've heard today, has seen these schemes adapt and change during that experiment, and this work by everyone has really strengthened what we have passed today. And I'm also clear, as we've heard from members today, that these schemes were experimental in nature, and it's therefore incumbent upon us to learn lessons from them as we bring forward more ambitious active travel schemes across the city. It's also important to say that this committee will be looking closely at how we make these measures look more permanent, and I am clear that this will involve replacing the temporary plastic planters that are currently in place as part of the experiment with more permanent street fixtures that people will hopefully love. And I guess using the words of councillor Auckland from earlier in the meeting, this is all about beautification, beautification, which we shouldn't downplay as an important issue in our neighbourhoods. In making these measures permanent, it's important that we continue to work with local councillors and residents, and as chair of this committee, it's something that I'll be keeping a close eye on, supported by members of this committee as well. So that moves us on to item 12, which is the active travel neighbourhood in Nether Edge. And we, the officer presenting is David and Sam and potentially even Tom as well. Thank you, if you could run us through the report, that would be brilliant.
Thank you Chair, I think it is, it may be a little bit late on in the process, but I'll just formally introduce Sam. So you'll be aware of Paul, myself and Dom, who've actually been the named, named authors of the reports that we're, that we're talking through today. Sam's been a real asset in the team in terms of helping, you know, the substantial amount of work that's been done around data collection, analysis and presentation. So, so that's, that's Sam. You won't see, necessarily see his name on his report on the reports, but he's been a, a real asset to the team to get us to where we are now. So we've already heard about the strategic importance of active travel schemes, including the Sheaf Valley cycle route and the Crooks-Walkley ATN, as well as the rationale, rationale between active travel neighbourhoods more broadly. So I'm just going to move straight into the detail of the Nether Edge ATN. This report sets out the response to the experimental traffic order for this scheme. By reducing traffic within residential streets, the scheme aims to reduce the risk to vulnerable road users, supports connections into the wider active travel network and empowers more people to spend time outside within their local areas as well, as well as by travelling on foot or by bike to visit friends, places of worth, local shops and services or green spaces. The principle is still that all properties are accessible, although some journeys by, by vehicle, by vehicles may well be over a longer route. Section one of the report covers the links to complementary schemes, the scheme's funding, background traffic data and the outcome of the initial consultation of the principle of the scheme, where 63% of respondents said they would like to see a reduction in traffic, 49% wanted improved crossings, 49% asked for safer, safer areas for children to play too. Paul highlighted in, in, in his introduction, the three-stage consultation process that we undertook for active travel neighbourhoods, this was the first stage. The plans originally included proposed road closures to motor, to motorised traffic on, on Archer Lane and also one on Union Road. There was a one-way restriction proposed along Nether Edge Road, as well as the two control, controlled pedestrian crossings on Osborne Road and Salter Lane. The Nether Edge road one-way and the linked Union Road closure were not implemented following local feedback. Section two covers the extensive monitoring and assessment of the scheme. Section 2.2 highlights the focus of the analysis with more detailed reports covering the outcomes of both the quantitative data, such as traffic count information, and the qualitative data, including attitudinal surveys, being included as appendices within the report. Overall, traffic within the area is reduced by around 3%, although there has been some significant increases at certain junctions within the scheme too, principally at Brinkliffe, Brinkliffe Edge Road and Banadale Road. Active travel has also increased in the area around 16% on roads within the scheme boundary, and that includes in areas where traffic has increased too, including the Brinkliffe Edge Road and Banadale Road junction. Concerns fed Batsworth have included the, the perception that there's been a significant increase in traffic, journey times and a consequent reduction in air, air quality in the area. Section 2.21 shows that some journey times on Abidale Road have increased by up to around 25% or 34 seconds on the section that, that goes through Sheldon, the Sheldon Road junction. The monitored journey times are based on data over a, a three-month period, so although they have increased, they don't appear to be increased by as much as, as, as some of the feedback that we've had has suggested. Should the permanent be, scheme be approved, as, as Dom highlighted earlier on, we'd look to mitigate some of the extended journey times in parallel with the TCF South West Corridors project by reviewing signal timings in the area to reflect the revised movements at specific, at specific junctions. Our data from established air, air quality count sites, including the limitations, are included in, in this section of the report too. Alongside the quantitative monitoring data, we did undertake a qualitative consultation exercise to gather feedback from residents, residents, businesses and visitors about the scheme. Two different approaches were used to collect this feedback, now face-to-face surveys using a random sampling approach and, and online, which, which does tend to lead to a self-selecting audience. When asked whether they were more likely, when asked whether people were more likely to walk or cycle, most respondents said that there'd been no change to their level of walking, walking and cycling, as Paul inferred in Crooks-Walkley too. But on average, around 16% said they were travelling more accurately, more accurately. 8% informed us that their journeys had changed from a vehicle to a more active mode. Although on average, you know, 30% of, of, of respondents thought that the perception of safety of cycling had increased, a larger number had thought it had decreased. 27% thought the general surroundings had improved as a result of the scheme, but again, slightly more people thought that it had worsened. Just looking at the sampled survey though, and moving away from the self-selecting audience, more people thought the general area had improved than, than not. The quantitative monitoring data shows that at around 12 months after the experiment began, the Nether Edge Active Neighbourhood project is generally having the intended impacts in the area of reducing motorised traffic and through, and through, and through traffic movements while increasing active travel volumes, even though the qualitative or perception data, which is covered in much more detail in, in section three of the report, and, and wider feedback covered in section four of the report, is, is much less positive. And I understand the feedback to local, to local members is, is less positive too. Overall, of over 3,000 mentions of, of different, of different comments that we've had feedback from related to the scheme, 43% were negative, 34% were positive and 26 were neutral. Perceptions of the scale of additional journey times, congestion and vehicle numbers don't appear to be shown in the data collected though. As has been highlighted with a, a number, we have a number of learning points through the implementation of, of this and the Crooks-Walkley scheme, including the, the size of the original consultation area not being big enough, it was latterly extended to include, you know, parts of Echols Ward too, and feedback that our traffic monitoring area should have, you know, should have been a, a little bit larger, again, heading more, more south and, south and west into the Echols Ward. It's also clear, as councillor Sanger, Sanger has highlighted, that the change from a scheme in principle through consultation to implementation of a trial was too big a leap for many who provided feedback to us on the scheme. The report produced to, to inform the, the committee decision today highlights that the measures being implemented as part of the ATN appear to have achieved their intended outcomes, the number of walking, cycling trips have increased both within the ATN and on boundary roads since the, since the interventions were put in place. It's for these reasons that the report to committee recommends that the members approve the implementation of the Nether Edge Active Neighbourhood as, as it currently stands. In other words, agree that all interventions currently implemented through the ETO should be made permanent. I'm more than happy to take any, any questions Chair.
Thank you David. Again, I, I propose to take this in two sections, an opportunity to ask officers questions and get responses for clarification, and then in the second part, an opportunity for members to discuss the course of action, and if there were any amendments, to propose those there and they will be dealt with. So the first part is an opportunity for members to ask points of clarification, questions to officers about the work and the report that has been put before us. Do I see any member wishing to ask a question? I don't see any members wishing to ask a question, so thank you very much to officers for presenting that report. That therefore moves us into the second part of this particular item, it's an opportunity for, for members to debate the course of action. councillor Merzaro?
Thank you. I support retaining the scheme in full as it is, this is an issue of fairness, we need to enable better and safer choices for people who don't want to or can't, or can't afford to drive, which is a significant proportion of Sheffield's population. And I'm going to focus on a group of people who have the most to lose from any dilution of the scheme or a loss of the scheme, and who have most at stake, both now and in the future, and also who don't have the chance to speak at this meeting, and I'm talking about children. Children don't get consulted on transport schemes or rat runs, but they're the ones who've lost their place space, their freedom to walk or pedal to school safely and their chance to socialise with friends. Archer Lane is used by large numbers of children walking to school, Mercy School, Cartonole and Holt House, as well as to Scouts. I'm going to quote from the many emails I've received in support of the scheme, at the last count, it was five to one in favour. It's been great at making our street a more friendly, cycle-friendly and child-friendly place. A year three child who wrote in said, when I'm older, I'd like to be able to walk home from my friend's house on my own and I need to be able to cross the road safely. Another one, my children have gained, have joined other children in creating Edgedale Road Environmental Crew to improve the area by litter picking. Here's another one, I see so many people cycling and walking, it's fantastic. Children gain independence, health benefits, ensuring children walk to school safely must be a priority. And my last quote, given the undeniable issue of climate change that we're facing now, I really do feel that we stop giving cars the number one priority and focus on the bigger picture. So I think we should listen to their voices and keep the scheme in full.
Thank you councillor Merzaro. councillor Sanger?
Thank you, thank you Chair. And clearly, you know, big thanks to the, the officers for the, for the work on, on, on this project. Archer Lane has, has, the closure of Archer Lane has proved very divisive and I cannot in all, in all honesty feel that continuing the closure of Archer Lane is the way forward, so I would like to move an amendment. Before I get there, just, just to say, just to say that the challenge that the officers have set at the beginning was the core part of the problem. We have to find ways of consulting wide enough and the, the nature of closing Archer Lane did have a big impact on many residents and businesses in the Exal area and they were not in, in Exal Ward and they, they'd not been part of the original consultation, I think that's been an ongoing problem. I think the other issue has been businesses, particularly taxi drivers have continued to write to members saying that, that they feel that this, this restriction is, 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 is the wrong, is the wrong one. So I, I accept the work the officers have done, but I, I feel that continuing with the closure of Archer Lane, we should rescind that. And I think, as I made the comments with, with the previous one, we need to learn lessons in terms of, in terms of active travel neighbourhoods and find better ways of consulting wider groups and taking people with us. So, 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 so Chair, so, so, so I think the wording of the amendment would just be to replace recommendation three with, with just, with just the ETO is not made permanent and the, and the Archer, Archer Lane closure is removed and a permanent traffic regulation order is promoted for the double yellow lines associated with the Osborne Road and Salter Lane pedestrian crossings, which we retained on a permanent basis. So I would like to propose that amendment Chair.
Thank you councillor Sanger. Before we deal with that, I think we do need to extend the guillotine, and I propose to do so by half an hour. I need the consent of members, if anyone doesn't consent, please raise your hand. Okay, so we've extended the guillotine by half an hour. councillor Sanger has outlined an amendment that he wishes to make, I believe he's clarified what that amendment is and read us the wording. I'll just take some advice from Robert from Legal and Governance.
Thank you, thank you Chair. councillor Sanger very kindly supplied a, a draft of the amendment to me, it may have been circulated to members, were we able to circulate that to members? Okay, I'll read it out. So I understand the amendment is to the recommendations and it's to replace three on this, on the original recommendation with, so get rid of approve progressing, replace with the ETO is not, is not made permanent and the Archer Lane road closure is removed. And, and I think it's to replace the four on the original recommendation, is it? Is it an additional?
Sorry, it's effectively an additional one.
An additional, an additional four and then we, then the four on the current recommendations goes to five, and then the five on the current recommendations goes to six.
Thank you. So councillor Sanger, is, is, is that the correct understanding of the amendment? So therefore, we need to find a second for that amendment. I can see councillor Barker, who has raised his hand, councillor Barker?
Thank you Chair, and thank you Andrew.
Thank you, Andrew. I am pleased to be able to second this amendment and perhaps have the opportunity to explain why. People probably don't know me very well, I don't live anywhere near this scheme, I don't work anywhere near this scheme, I very rarely travel anywhere near this scheme and I represent people in the east of Sheffield for whom not one person has mentioned this scheme to me. So if my role as a city councillor, that becomes difficult. So one of the reasons I'm pleased to be able to speak now is one, to thank the officers who have provided some excellent information on this scheme and kept me up to date, but more so to thank all the many residents of the area who've provided a whole variety of opinions. My inbox certainly over the last couple of weeks has been absolutely full of messages from people who've taken the time to express their views on this. And the difficulty is, these are very, very differing views and, you know, it's very easy if you have a consultation and everybody says we want it or we don't want it, but you can imagine there are very, very different views. And I'd particularly like to thank my colleagues, Nigga and Ibby, who are local councillors in Nether Edge, for doing their jobs as local councillors in Nether Edge, for actually listening to what people say and for telling us what people in the area are saying. And that has helped to influence my decision on this and my support of the amendment, even though I know it's not universally popular. I mean, in fact, I've come from a personal point of view, I'm starting to feel I might at one time been ahead of my time because I didn't learn to drive until I was 40, which is probably longer ago than many of you are thinking, but, you know, it was a while ago. And before that, my only form of transport was cycling. I didn't cycle for pleasure, I didn't have a mountain bike, I had a road bike and I drove it on the roads. I used to cycle from Woodhouse to Fullwood when I worked at Fullwood. Thankfully I got moved to Third Park, which was a slightly flatter journey and I'd cycle there every day. I had no qualms about putting my football kit on my back and cycling to Loxley on a Sunday morning, playing football and cycling back and even not as often managed to get a cricket bag on the back of a road bike and get to the odd cricket game. I'm still not sure how I did that. And I have to say, I would have killed for safe active travel schemes and cycling or probably had been less likely to be killed. I'm thankful that over all that time cycling, I was only ever hit by a motorist twice and wasn't seriously injured on either occasion and both times they didn't see me, you know, they weren't thinking. So anything we can do to protect that is brilliant, but time, over time, I've changed. I lost my job in Sheffield, I was made redundant and I work in Harrogate, cycling not an option. And sadly, my wife has a rare neurological condition which results in, you know, increasing levels of muscle weakness as time goes on. And driving is the only option to visit a lot of places. It's all we can do to get there. If you want to go out and see places, we have to drive. And, well, I think these schemes are great and, you know, some of the benefits have been pointed out by people who live in the area are wonderful. I don't think as a nation, as a society, we've quite reached a stage where we can universally do all this, you know, and it's not just active transport, you know. My travel, my travel is reduced by probably seven or eight thousand miles a year as a result of teams' meetings and being able to access network files from home and from anywhere in the country rather than having to drive into work. And I think there are lots of things and a lot further we can go. And sadly, I fear there may have been announcements this afternoon by central government that don't get as there as quickly. But until all those things are in place, I just don't think we can universally do this. And when people in the area and the people who represent the people in the area are expressing those concerns, I think on this occasion, having supported the other schemes that have come before us today, because they are entirely the right thing to do, I think I have to go with the amendment as proposed by councillor Sangha today. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Barker. So councillor Sangha made an amendment that was seconded by councillor Barker. We would then have a debate about the amendment that has been proposed and then we'll have a vote on whether to accept the amendment, which would then, if successful, form the substantive of the motion, the report that we are providing. Can I just get some clarification from Robert? We don't normally amend papers in such a manner, so it would be good to get the clarification.
Yep, that's the standard process when an amendment comes through, proposal second, debate the motion to amend, vote on that. If it's voted through, it changes the substantive recommendation, you'll go on then to carry out and vote on that. If it isn't supported and falls away, then you revert to the original recommendation and move that on to further discussion and the vote.
Thank you very much, Robert. Much clearer and succinct than me. I can see councillor Gilligan Kubo indicating.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to talk against this motion. I think it's a regressive move. I have never had such a large postbag as most of the councillors on this committee have about this scheme and I would say 90% of the messages I received want to keep Archer Road closed to traffic. We've just passed two very good schemes supporting cycling, walking and making neighbourhoods safer for people and I cannot see why we would not want to pass this one. I think the report says the increase in journey times for some people was 34 seconds or something like that? I mean, 34 seconds? It's absolutely nothing and it's such a property route. I'm, like my friend councillor Merzaro, I have a whole load of quotes from people saying how their lives have been improved by the closure of this road. I've started to cycle in Sheffield as a result. My asthma is gone, we can cross the road, we can hear birdsong. I think these are the things that are important. This is what our transport strategy says for Sheffield. We need to make our neighbourhoods safer, cleaner, nicer places for walking and cycling. And actually councillor Barker, I'm amazed that you admitted you'd been injured by cars on your bike twice. I mean, that is one of the reasons we want to keep Archer Lane closed, so we can protect our cyclists because this is a very well-used road for cyclists. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Gilligan Kubo. Do I see any other member wishing to make a contribution to this part of our meeting? I don't. So therefore we move to a vote on whether to accept the amendment that has been proposed. And therefore I would ask people to indicate, sorry, let me just get some clarification. So I'm asking people to put their hands up if they are in favour of the amendment. There will be an opportunity in a short while to say, to raise your hand to say that you are against, if that's the case. So all those people who are in favour of the amendment. So six people are in favour of the amendment. All those who are against the amendment. Two people against the amendment. I will give people an opportunity to abstain and one person who is abstaining. So therefore that is carried. I'll just ask us some clarification on what that means for the paper.
Thank you, Chair. So that means that the recommendation has been changed to the amendment and therefore you now go on to debate further the report noting that the motion has changed or you can go straight to the vote on the recommendation as amended.
Thank you, Robert, for the guidance. I can also see Tom indicating to speak. Tom?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to make a point, obviously, that with the recommendation changing, I think there's an important point that needs just to be expressed in terms of where the decision may take us and maybe some additional information that we would need to gather as part of the kind of follow-on from any decision to the amended recommendation. So if the decision is made to remove the closure of Archer Lane, I think officers would be recommending that there is a need to understand and monitor what the reintroduction of non-residential through traffic actually is. So that data monitoring would need to be undertaken as part of any decision. It would be something that we'd be doing as part of the monitoring of the scheme that was retained. I think our recommendation would be to kind of continue to monitor the effects of that removal of that measure.
Thank you, Tom, for clarifying that. We know that officers would do that, so thank you very much for clarifying it. Do I see any members wishing to make any additional points about the report as is amended? I don't. We do have to formally move to the part of the meeting where we'll be taking a decision formally on the active travel neighbourhood in Nether Edge. However, I do see that councillor Gilligan Kubo has got a hand up and indicating.
Yeah, can we have a recorded vote please on this one?
I'll just ask for clarification as to whether recorded votes are a thing that we can do in committees. I don't see any objection to doing so, but it has to be part of the constitution, doesn't it? We are currently seeking to find out and we'll find out from the constitution. Okay, so we've taken some clarification and one-third of the meeting would therefore need to show an indication that they want to have a recorded vote. Do I see three people, one-third of members who would like a recorded vote? I can only see two? Two people? Oh, okay, I can see more than two, right. Okay, I can see more than two people. We certainly can do that. I think we'll therefore do this by roll call, is that correct, Robert? We're just seeking clarification as to how we do this. Okay, we're going to do this by roll call and I'm going to go round the room. You have an option of either saying that you are in favour, against or that you are abstaining on this particular item. So I'm going to start with councillor David Barker.
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Craig Gamble-Pew. Councillor Sead. Councillor Gilligan Kubo. Councillor Merzaro. Councillor Shaw. Councillor Auckland.
Four.
Councillor Sangha.
Four.
And I am four. So that therefore means that this item, item 12, has been carried as modified in the meeting. I think I should probably say thank you very much to the way, to everyone for the way that we've conducted ourselves during this debate and for the hard work of officers in putting together that report. As Chair, I think it's really important that I take an opportunity to reflect on this. Today, of course, we have passed a number of active travel schemes across Crooks, Walkley and Nether Edge, as well as pushed forward on the Sheaf Valley cycle route. And that really does show that as a council, we want to give people genuine choice about how we travel and create communities that are safer and more sustainable. In relation to Nether Edge, the decision that we've taken today is one that listens to residents and that is why we've taken the decision as a committee to make permanent the two crossings and not to continue with the trial closure of Archer Lane. What is clear is that we need to bring people along with us when changes take place in their neighbourhoods and we should reflect on the lessons at moments like these and I am determined to do that and I know we all are as a council. So thank you very much for your time and coming to our meeting today. That concludes our business. Thank you.